Welcome everyone to the Tuesday, March 10th School Board meeting. And if everyone could join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic forged in one nation under heaven, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Alan, do you have any adjustments to the agenda?
I just have one adjustment, and that is under 6B. We have middle school in Poncove staff medical leave requests. I also have one for an extended leave, excuse me, that probably should not go there, should go into the new business. So why don't we add it as...
7G?
Yes. So we'll put it there because that one is business.
Okay. I would just like to request or make a suggestion or request to the board if we could possibly move public comment on agenda items from the end of the budget to immediately at the very beginning of the new business section, right before we vote on adoption of the superintendent's budget. And if we do that, limit the time to 10 to 15 minutes.
So moved.
Second. Any comments or questions or suggestions? Okay, all those in favor? Thank you. So we will have public comment right at the beginning of new business, and we will limit it to 10 to 15 minutes. Okay. Comments by student reps. Okay, we have a very tall student rep. From the middle school.
Older than usual.
What's that movie where you age backwards?
That's a good one.
There's no respect. I received an email from Mark Parker, who was a parent at the middle school, actually, I think he's a parent at all three schools. And this is about the chess team, so I'll share this information. The Maine State Scholastic Team Chess Tournament was held today, and that was dated March 7th in Orno. The Cape Elizabeth Theta-16 continued its remarkable run in winning the championship for the third consecutive year. The winning team was comprised of Matthew Fishbein, perfect 4-0 in his rounds, along with Wes Parker, Matthew Reali-Hadem, Jack Demmer, Leo Wing, and Will Krieger. The team finished with 15 out of a possible 20 points and beat the second place team, Diorile Stonington, the other perennial powerhouse, by one and a half points. Our K-8 or junior high division team was smaller this year and fell short of its goal to defend its 2008 state championship, but nonetheless made an impressive showing with 13 out of 20 possible points to take a clear second place behind the junior high school champion, Diorata. Brett Parker led the team with a perfect 4-0 record and was joined by strong play from the remainder of the group, including Anthony Pachero, Danny Brett, Nick Shed, and Ethan Dupere. For the first time this year, Cape entered the team into the K-3 division. Zale Rasko, Kyle Russell, and Olivia Reali-Hadem made the long trip and did Cape proud with solid play and great sportsmanship, undoubtedly they will contribute to the future and ongoing success of the K-16s. Do you want me to do the literature one now or wait?
Will that come to that?
We'll get it. Okay.
Congratulations to all of those chess teams. Also, I apologize, we need to go back and do an approval of the school board minutes from the regular meeting on Tuesday, February 10th. So if I could have a motion to approve those?
So moved.
Thank you, Linda. Anybody, Mary? Thank you. Any comments, questions, suggestions, or corrections? Okay, all those in favor? 7-0, thank you. Sorry about that. And we have no high school reps. Jeff, do you have any comments or no? You don't have to, I just want to...
I can just very quickly... These are really in the nature of recognitions more than anything else. Well, first of all, we are beginning the course selection process. That'll be, we'll be working on that over the next few weeks with students and parents. So that's always an interesting time, and it sort of informs some of the budget decisions that could get made as well, and it always is fascinating puzzle to try to solve, to try to figure out how to make things work for most kids. I just want to offer congratulations to the girl swim team for winning the state championship, Class A Division. Actually, I was just told today that Nora Daley has been selected as the outstanding girl swimmer in the state of Maine as well, which I think is fabulous. Did you know that, Joan? Oh, yes, you did. Congratulations, obviously, to the boys basketball team for winning the Western Maine Regional for the second year in a row. They fell short in the state championship against a very powerful team. They also won the sportsmanship award, which we're very proud of for that accomplishment. And I also want to comment on, we had an unbelievable turnout of Cape Elizabeth community at the state championship game. There had to be 2,000 at least Cape people, and it was really exciting. And I also want to say that our kids were fabulous. They were spirited, they were loud, and they were positive. They were really good. And competing at sort of a lesser level, a little bit more under the radar, and hopefully we'll be able to give you the final results in a few weeks, but our science team is right now in first place in the North Shore Science League competition in Massachusetts, so we're very excited about that.
Thank you, Jeff, on behalf of the high school students. Comments from the public on non-agenda items. Is there anyone who wishes to speak to something that's not on the agenda? Okay. Recognition, Jeff, I should have just had you stay right there. Got a couple items from the high school.
The first is, we had a group of students who went down to Boston University for a Model UN competition. A thousand, over a thousand students from across New England and the Atlantic region converged on Boston at this Model UN, and the kids did very well. And for the first time ever, Rachel Muscat, one of our seniors who was participating, whose role was, she was on the USSR Council of Ministers, and she won a Best Delegate recognition, which is the first time anybody from Cape has. It's the highest award for individual performance that students can get, so that's fabulous for that number of students competing. And John Aronson, also a senior, won an Outstanding Delegate Award, which is also a tremendous accomplishment with that field of students. The World Affairs Council Model UN has really flourished at the high school, it's just a fabulous, fabulous program. It really opens students' minds to be good global citizens and aware of things that are going on. Those same two students that I mentioned are two of our four students who are Presidential Scholar nominees. That's John Aronson and Rachel Muscat. And Presidential Scholars are nominated by a mysterious process that takes into account SAT scores and AP scores, a whole bunch of academic sort of measures, but also extracurricular involvement, community involvement, and those sorts of things. And it's a really huge honor to be nominated. It's a very extremely competitive process to go beyond that process, and there's a lot of work that goes into actually completing the application that Presidential Scholar requires. The other two, besides John Aronson and Rachel Muscat, are Caitlin Pomeroy and Michael Taintor. So congratulations to all of those four students.
Thank you, Jeff. Actually, to put you on the spot one more time, do you have any idea, I was going to put in recognition for the theater group that are participating in the one act, because if anyone hasn't gone, I would encourage them to go, it's a great performance. Do you have any idea how they did? They were competing last Saturday.
They won their regional, and they're going on to the state drama festival, which I think is two weekends from now.
Right.
And there will be several, is it two weekends or one? It's not this weekend, yeah, it's the following weekend. And there will be a number of performances next week, so stay tuned for those. And I would second what Tripp says, it's well worthwhile going to see it if you haven't had the opportunity yet, it's just really, really well done.
Thank you, Jeff. I promise I'll give you a break now. Steve, middle school letters about literature.
This is information from Jamie Micho about letters, regarding letters about literature. It's a writing contest. It's a national writing contest for students in grades four through 12. It's sponsored by the Center for the Book in the Library of Congress in partnership with Target. The purpose of the contest is to promote reading and writing. The contest prompt is the same every year. Select a fiction or nonfiction book, a short story, a poem, an essay, or a speech you have read and about which you have strong feelings. Write a letter to the author explaining how this piece of literature affected you. This year, there were 54,000 students nationwide who entered the contest, and after the first two rounds of judging, 49,000 of those entries were eliminated. The remaining 5,000 entries included 13 of Jamie's students from the middle school in the eighth grade. She had 30, I think it was like 37 students submit papers to that, and 13 are in the final 10 percent. These 5,000 entries have been sent to the students' home states where literacy organizations complete another round of judging to determine state winners. In Maine, the Maine Humanities Council is in charge of judging. Winners in each state will then be part of a fourth round of judging to determine national winners. I am currently waiting to hear if any of my 13 students is a semifinalist or winner for the state of Maine. We should know the results, she should get an email tonight. I have required my students to enter this contest for the past two years. I learned about this contest at a professional development workshop given by the literacy expert Nancy Atwell, amazing author for middle school literacy. And Jamie was able to attend that workshop in 2007 thanks to Professional Development Funds. I think she put a plug in there. Among many other things, Nancy taught me how to be a good writing, how to determine a good writing contest from a scan, and showed her that writing contests can be very motivating to student writers. Here are the names of this, I promised, she said, "I promised my kids you'd read this tonight." So, okay, I'll read it. So, the 13 students are Griffin Carpenter for his piece on One Flew Over the Cuckoo's Nest, Megan Clifford for Night, Jane Coffin, The Book Thief, Alex Cooley, A Long Way Gone, Emma Daddman, The Kite Runner, Clarice Debold, My Sister's Keeper, Hannah Deneen, My Sister's Keeper, Daniel Epstein, The Book of Joby, Michaela Ford, Night, Courtney Garette, Beyond Basketball, Emma Inhorn, Ink Spell, Katie McDonald, That Summer, and Laura Mackay, The Girls.
Thank you, Steve. Okay, moving on to communications, athletics update. Jeff?
And Mr. Shed kind of stole my thunder here a little bit, but I will, as I did...
That's a different light on it.
Yeah. It's all good news, though, so I will, again, put together sort of season summary and then put that out to the community and to the school board as well, which kind of sums up some of our individual and team accomplishments this winter. And it was a very busy, yet very successful winter, and we are now moving on to spring, trying to finalize schedules, and that, everything now is on the Cape Elizabeth webpage and up to date, and hopefully, the snow will melt and we'll be on the fields as soon as possible. But, so I figured since we sort of touched on the winter accomplishments, maybe just give a brief update where we are with Sports Done Right. So we have had several small group meetings throughout the year, and just recently met twice with a leadership team for Sports Done Right in January and February, and really kind of finalized our action plan. And in that action plan, what we're trying to do is identify areas of commendation, and then areas of recommendation, and then how to, and come up with a plan on how to address the areas that we need to improve on. And once we have that set, which should be hopefully by the end of this week, we'll submit our books to the Sports Done Right group in Bangor, at Orno. And from there, we will hopefully have an accreditation committee come down and meet with some of the coaches, some of the parents, some of the students, and the school board members as well. We haven't learned of all the fine details yet, but that will come soon, and we'll get that information out to everyone. So they'll speak and meet, and based on their conversations and based on our book, our Sports Done Right book for Cape Elizabeth, they will hopefully approve us, and we can start that process for the '09, '10 school year. And from that point, it's really a matter of educating our high school, middle school, community service programs, some of our outside travel team programs, and just getting that information out and getting the community to sort of understand, again, we've introduced it, but I think coming back to it and really kind of understanding what Sports Done Right is all about and making it a community concept. So that's exciting news, we're really looking forward to that, and I'd like to thank everyone that's been involved. We've had some really good discussions, and I think it's going to be a really positive piece for the athletic programs in the community. So that's where we are with Sports Done Right, and we're also meeting, hoping to set up another booster meeting this month and kind of review where we are with the athletic budget and for next year, or at least give them a rough idea as to what we're expecting, and just again, you know, communicate on, I think, understanding the economic times that we're in, looking at ways where we can better spend and better utilize our funds. So that should be occurring hopefully soon, at the end of the month, and like I said, I will provide everyone with a season summary for the winter sports, and that's about it.
Thank you. Any questions, Jeff? Thank you, Jeff. Alan, middle school in Poncove family leave requests.
I just suddenly realized as I looked at these that one of them is requesting an extended leave of absence, and that's Nicole Ball. So I'm going to hold hers until we get down to the path that I also do about Karen Liam. So the one that I will do right now is for Kim Ukel. She's submitting her request for maternity leave beginning sometime around in April, and by what she calculates right now, she'd be out for six, eight weeks, but is not requesting any extension. So I only present this to you tonight for information, so you'll be aware of that, that we will be having someone covering her class once she delivers, or when she delivers, or before she delivers until the end of the year.
Okay, thank you, Alan. Retirement of middle school staff.
And that middle school staff person is here.
Yes.
And so I would like to read her letter. This is from Julie Salinas. In a letter she wrote, "While cleaning out some files a few weeks ago, I found a letter of welcome from Ron Reynolds, the superintendent who hired me 36 years ago. It prompted me to reflect over my career here, which has been the greater part of my professional life. I am thankful for the opportunity that I've had, my colleagues are the best, and the students I have worked with have always been a treasure to me. I have wonderful memories. The time has come for me to take my leave, effective at the end of the current '08-'09 school year. I thank you and the school board for the privilege of serving as a school nurse for the Cape Elizabeth community. I present this with great regret, but also wish her well, as I've said to her before, she'll feel 20 years younger next week after she's retired." So congratulations, Julie.
Does anyone have a comment? Because I do if no one else does. I just want to say, Julie, that my children, all three of them, and I will miss you greatly, and I'm sure that I'm speaking for many of the parents in the community, so thank you for always being there and going above and beyond.
I feel cheated. You should.
Julie, I don't want to put you on the spot, but also I would like to, if you would like to say something, you're welcome to, you do not have to. I saw the note. Okay, thank you.
Resignation of Poncove Health Educator.
Yes, this has been an interesting one. Gina Rosi, who has been a half-time health educator at Poncove for three, is this her third year? I had a contact from the Portland School System a while ago, saying that she was a candidate for a full-time position there. That word, "full-time position," meant something to me, because I knew by the looks of the budget, she would not be full-time here for a long time, and so I really had to consider that. So I called Tom and talked with him, and we both agreed that although we hate to lose Gina because she is such a positive influence at Poncove, we have to look at it from a professional point of view too. And so I did grant her the opportunity to go to Portland, and we are in the process right now of replacing her at Poncove. So what she has written here is, "I would like to inform you that I am resigning from my position as Poncove Health Educator for the Cape Elizabeth School System. Thank you for the professional and personal development you have assisted me with over the last four years, okay? I consider everyone I have met here to be a friend of mine, and I will miss you all. However, I have been presented an opportunity to teach in the school system as a full-time health educator. In these financially difficult times, it is in my best interest to create a more stable situation for my family and myself. For these reasons, I feel it is time to move on to different opportunities and challenges." And so I did, I talked with her for a long time, I talked with Tom, I talked with people in Portland, and I have released her so that she can go over there to teach health, full-time at the middle school.
Any questions or comments, sir? Alan? Thank you, Alan. The last item is a quick recap of the February 25th meeting that was held here at Town Hall with the local legislators and school board members from Cape Elizabeth, South Portland, and Scarborough. There's a great summary of that meeting in the Cape Courier, so I'm not going to, I will refer people to that, I'm not going to take up too much time. But Jim Rowe, the Town Council Chair, arranged that meeting, we want to thank him for that, and it was really to provide an opportunity for the people in attendance to sort of talk, have some dialogue, to exchange ideas in how the three communities might consider collaboration in a number of areas. We left it, some of the follow-up items, it's still a little bit unclear where, whether there's continued interest in having these again, it did seem like there was. There were two items of follow-up, and I think, I spoke with Jim a little bit, he was wondering if the school board, and he suggested you, Alan, could identify, and you've been doing it anyway, but also I would turn to Rebecca and Mary, because you guys have been doing a good job, to identify someone who would sort of provide public, the public with information, as well as the school board and town council with updates on the stimulus packages they become available. And also, the other thing, he is sort of waiting to see if there, any of the collaborative ideas that came, were discussed, if we're going to continue in these types of meetings, and if there was a small group that was formed to sort of represent the school board. Is there anyone, and again, this is sort of vague, and I don't need an answer tonight, but if there's anyone who's interested in serving on that small group or sort of working, if a group gets formed, in doing that, to let me know. And there are other people, a lot of people who are at that meeting, so if anyone, I'd open the floor to anyone who might want to comment on impressions or thoughts from that meeting. Okay, moving on. We were entering into new business, the first item of business is consideration and action to adopt the superintendent's budget. I know, that's what I was going to say. And we had earlier in the evening said that we would allow public comment, so anyone who wishes to speak can approach the podium, please identify yourself, and we are, I will comment ahead of time, I apologize if it appears rude, but we are going to limit people so that we can wrap up public comment no, sometime between 20 of and quarter of eight. So if you could keep your comments brief, it would be appreciated. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Julie Salinas, a school nurse in the middle school, and I want to thank you for your kind words. But I'm really here to speak about cuts of EdTech Ones. I'd like to share a letter I wrote to Steve Colling and Superintendent Hawkins about Sherri Gillies, whose position as EdTech One was cut in the first round. It was suggested to me that I share this letter with the board and the community at large, so that people understand the importance of these positions. I know it could be said of any of the other EdTechs whose positions are also being cut. As many others have already done, I would like to share some thoughts about my colleague, Sherri Gillies. Sherri wears many hats in our building, and she wears them all very well. As a hard-working EdTech, she helps the grade-level teams in preparing daily classroom materials. Whether it is a last-minute request or a long-term project, she is always efficient and prepared. If a teacher becomes ill, or a family member becomes ill, has a doctor's appointment or must attend an IEP, Sherri is more than willing to cover a class. She does what is asked of her, and she does it with a smile. Sherri covers the main office when there is a need, and she greets the public with kindness and respect. Parents and students find her to be engaging and most helpful. If I am in health class or attending a meeting, Sherri will gladly cover the health office. She is caring and thoughtful in meeting the needs of students, and she is a quick thinker and uses excellent judgment. She is not afraid to ask questions, and she always completes her work. She is one of the few EdTechs, system-wide, who has completed a state-mandated training in first aid and medication administration. She is also CPR and AED certified, which is incredibly important today in our school. Sherri Gillies is one of those people in the middle school who is part of the glue that holds us together. She seldom misses a day of work. She serves as a community team facilitator and often helps to organize those events. She volunteers to attend Chawonki, she chaperones the dances, and she has opened her home and heart for faculty and staff gatherings. Teachers often stop by her office for friendly chats, for treats to be found in her desk drawer, and for good laughs and cries. She does the calling for subs early in the morning, and I can assure you, if you don't have EdTechs to help teachers next year, you will be needing many more substitutes. Sherri Gillies is a talented, intelligent, caring human being who works much harder than the salary she receives. I hope that, as you reflect over the budget during this very difficult time, you realize the value of these positions. More importantly, though, consider the person who presently holds that position. Sherri Gillies is a tremendous asset to the middle school, as are all of the other EdTech Ones. Thank you for allowing me to share your thoughts.
Thank you, Julie.
David Hillman of Cranbrook Drive. Has everybody in school had a chance to read my short, seven-page comments? Because I won't repeat them. I want to clarify something that apparently has come up. I know that suggestions made the school board that they ought to consider consolidating Poncove Middle School into a K-8 school, and somewhat piggybacking on my comments about how it should be what we call in the legal community administrative sharing, administrative consolidation of secretary or clerical staff. It's actually two completely different things. I was not, anyway, suggesting you combine two schools. Combining two schools, Poncove Middle School, would be a disaster. One, it would have terrible consequences for the town that I don't believe these people realize. Secondly, it won't work, it won't save money, it'll actually cost money. And third, it won't work because you can't combine the teaching and education and safety and the needs of a first grader with an adolescent. I mean, they're two different worlds, two different groups of people. The terrible result for the town is simply that we lose our exemption from school consolidation law. You need at least three schools. If you go to two schools, you automatically lose your exemption. That would be horrendous result. We would then be combined with South Portland, which is losing, or maybe losing a certification and have significantly higher education costs than we do. But we would lose our school exemption if we went to two schools. That alone should kill it. But secondly, the idea that if you combine two schools, you achieve efficiencies, economies, the scale, synergies, all that sort of stuff, it doesn't work. That was all done in the '70s and '80s with corporations combining, they all found it didn't work. It didn't work and actually cost them money. They found it didn't work for a very simple reason. If you have two companies with equally efficient administration, you have 10 people administration, 50 workers, Company B has 10 people administration, efficiently working, 500 workers, you combine it till you get 1,000 workers, you still need 20 people. I mean, just because you become one thing, you can't cut out half of them. So it just doesn't work, and it's been shown for 20 years now it doesn't work. So I want to clarify that. I will not repeat the points made in my, since you all nodded, at least pretending you had read it. I would note a couple of comments. I'm disappointed that my suggestion about determining efficiencies doesn't appear to have been examined, and that is, I'm sorry if I, doesn't appear to have been examined... And that is, I'm sorry if I, doesn't appear to have been examined. I suggested that strongly the secretarial clerical xeroxed that all three schools they administrate, in a superintendent's office, be looked at to consolidate. And I mean on an administrative basis. And also, maybe the superintendent in the town. It doesn't look like there's any administrative cuts, all educational cuts, still, although some has been put back in. I strongly suggest that you take a look at it. I believe, but I do not know, that there is savings that could be made there. And I would like that savings be put into education, which ultimately leads to tax savings. I also think, and I wanted to reiterate one point made in mind, there is still some significant underfunding, even though you've put money back into the budget, which I applaud. The nature of the beast, the way we do our budget system, is we compare budget in year two to year one, and that necessarily doesn't pick up underfunding that occurred in year one because it wasn't included in the budget. I calculated at least six hundred thousand of what we need for textbooks, replacement computers, and tech support, never mind all the things we've done for technology, that we put in fifty thousand for. That leaves at least, in my mind, five hundred and fifty thousand dollars short. Hopefully, we can get some money from the stimulus for that. But with the other four hundred thousand dollars in cuts, that means our budget's about a million dollars short. I know the political realities you have to live with, but I want people to understand, especially the public, that this budget, a 1.93% budget, which is only seventy-seven cents per household, which translates to about four cents a day, is a diminutive impact on the households, especially when you get the eight hundred dollar stimulus money from the federal government. But it has massive impact on our schools, because that's hundreds of thousands of dollars that were short. And I think we're gonna have to make it up, and make it up fairly soon. Thank you.
Thank you, David.
Hi, my name is Chris Volso Umera, I'm the librarian in the special class at Poncove School. And I really feel like I just need to come and talk about the EdTech One positions, especially as it pertains to the media center at Poncove School. We are a teaching library with a fairly full schedule of students all day long. While I am actually teaching the class, teaching kids how to find books, how to use a call number, what it means, all those kinds of things, doing research, using indexes, EdTech staff in the library tends to everybody else who walks into the media center while I'm teaching. So teachers that come in looking for materials, other students that come in looking for things, maybe they were out the day before, maybe they forgot their library books. She attends to those needs, those students and teachers. I think that cutting the position of the EdTech One in the media center will greatly affect my ability to make that position a teaching position. If it's not gonna be a teaching position, then I think you're really not following the best practices and the data that supports current staffing that we have in the libraries in Cape Elizabeth. I know I sent you letters citing that information. And there is, there's a real correlation between having funded libraries that help students expand their horizons and explore interests that pertain to them. That's something they don't have time to do in the classroom. If you take away that teaching element and that support, it's gonna have a trickle-down effect that you probably won't see right away. But I think you really have to think hard about going down that road. And if it's a road you truly indeed want to go down, then there are much, there are better ways, and you can cut much more money. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Anyone else?
Hi, I'm Susan Data, I teach Spanish at the middle school. I'm also a resident of Cape Elizabeth, but I'm here tonight speaking as a teacher. I'm just, I would just like to, first of all, I just want to thank all of you for everything that you do. I realize that you're all volunteers, and I appreciate all that you do. And I realize that this is a really tough economic time. I just really want to address the EdTechs. The World Language Team did send a letter to Steve Conley, our principal, and to Alan Hawkins, but I just have to come up and have this just put on the record. And I realize that things are gonna have to be cut, but I just want to explain what an EdTech does for us, aside from photocopying. I mean, that is one thing. The demands on the teachers in the past five or ten years have really increased with the email, I'm just thinking of emails today, three parent emails, it took me forty-five minutes just to respond to three emails because I had to do some research, I wanted to write it well. So that's, that's my plan here, forty-five minutes, is responding to three emails. We probably get twenty-five to fifty emails a day. Some are just internal, which are really quick, but, so that's one thing, that just having an EdTech to do some photocopying frees up that time. I don't want to spend too much time on photocopying, because I'd like to know more details how they really support student learning. One example, just, I happened to do it today, so I just went a little bit later after school, but Bente Batas, which is Twenty Cows, which is a game that, these were laminated by an EdTech, we've got sixty cows here. And it's one of those things, it's this great game, I went from a listserv, again, spending a lot of time in professional development on my own, and I read about it four years ago, I said, "Let me give us a try in class." And it's just a really simple game, so Bente Batas, you've got the alliteration, Twenty Cows, it takes twenty seconds, it's a team has, there are two teams, we just did a review today with vocabulary. I had students, I had the really popular students, the students weren't quite as popular, the high achievers, the lower achievers, working as a group collaboratively. They were so excited to win Twenty Cows. The first team that wins Twenty Cows is a champion. So it sounds really simple, but I probably wouldn't play this game without EdTechs, because I don't have time to make sixty cows. I did find the clip art, it took about an hour, decided to clip art with a cow that looked appropriate, some cows aren't really appropriate, so, but they laminated, so I missed one. I'd be really careful in middle school, you've got appropriate-looking cows. But, and I can just go on and on and on in terms of the materials that they've developed. The World Language Team, all of our materials are teacher-generated in grades three through six, and then also in grade seven and eight. A lot of it is teacher-generated, in part, the textbooks are old, and I realize there's gonna be funding for textbooks, but aside from that, a language is so dynamic that I'm just constantly coming up with new things, and this is an example of one that an EdTech that would do. Another important thing, it sounds very small, it's almost an intangible, it's hard to describe, but it's just in terms of the climate, if I know, for example, when my children were younger, and I wanted to catch like the last fifteen minutes of a performance at Poncove, or even if I were in South Portland or Falmouth, and EdTech could come cover my class for just those last fifteen or twenty minutes, I probably wouldn't bother to submit for a personal day or a sub for something like that. But that really is a climate, the profession, the feel for how we're supported, and I do feel that we are supported in the system, but I just, it's from a good feeling to an excellent feeling. The same thing with student learning, from good learning to excellent learning. And I think Cape prides itself on being an excellent school system. And I just see, over the, having taught here for eighteen years, two children went through the system, just an erosion little by little by little, and not, again, not reflexively this board, but over, over time. And these are just little things that are, they're intangible, but we're losing these. I can put up with the building being cold, the students know to wear sweaters this year, those types of things are fine, I realize that we have to do that. But this is, and it's hard for me to describe this because it is, is just the intangible. I don't want to take up too much more time, but, the other thing, I mean, I could, the other thing, I really do not like to get subs, and I think many teachers feel this way, because if I get a sub to come in to cover for a class, if I have a dentist appointment, sometimes you can only get one at one-thirty in the afternoon. I could take a medical day, the district is gonna have to pay for a sub for the afternoon. But also, when I have a sub in a language, I rarely, rarely do have a sub who knows the language, so I'm really leaving busy work for the students. Whereas if I can at least get my students started, and maybe the last fifteen minutes of that class, I can do their homework, and then an EdTech will come in to cover, it really benefits student learning. I think all, the bottom line is, how is this benefiting student learning? And I really think those EdTechs support us that way. So I guess I'm just gonna stop here, but I really, I also headed the Climate Committee District Wide, K through twelve, for three or four years. And I just, this probably hits me more in terms of climate, well, climate and also student learning, so I'll just leave it at that. I just want to go on and record, if we ever get money from surplus or whatever, I want that. So, thank you.
Thank you, Susan. I think we probably have maybe three to four more minutes, if there's anyone else who would like to speak. Thank you to all who spoke. Alan, I'm wondering, the first item is consideration and adoption of your budget, if you'd like to give us a quick overview of where from the last workshop.
Sure, I'd be happy to do that. As you remember, we met last Friday as a finance committee, and I did go over the latest rendition of the alternatives for this budget. I want to be very clear as I talk about it, is that we start budget early in the fall with information that is not clear, some information's not there, even information today that's not there. For instance, GPA, we still don't know exactly what that's going to be. We look at it very carefully from all aspects of the school department. I'm very clear, I remember four years ago when I first came here and I made a presentation on the budget, I made the statement that, with what has been happening in this town with school budgets, we are getting back into a corner. Many people laughed at that. I don't think as many people laugh at it today, because we are backed into a corner. No matter what decisions we make, there are popular sides of it, and there are unpopular sides of it. I was struck, if I can just comment in it for a minute to go with this, is David Hillman's comment about administration. I will remind people that last year, we cut over eighty thousand dollars worth of administration when we cut the curriculum director. We also cut Shari's position at that point in time, which was to support student learning. Those were both administrative positions that were very important to us, but we could no longer afford them. So today, my administrators are the ones who are doing all of that work, and added more time already to a very, very heavy schedule to do that. So when we look at secretaries and people who work in the buildings, I have to look at it from the perspective of, what are the demands that are put on them? I'm also very clear, as I've worked on, worked on this budget, that we are coming into a different era, where for next year, we are going to look at every component of our budget. That will be from the superintendent right straight through to every person in the system. What is the effect, the positive effect of learning in every person who works in the system? And I feel very strongly that bus drivers, food service operators, all of those people, the maintenance people, all play an important role in how our schools operate, so that we don't have ceilings falling down, so that we have reasonable cleanliness, so that we have food available, we have teachers, we have EdTechs, we have administrators, et cetera. We will be looking at every single component this coming year. But I would say to you that, it is very easy to forget what has been done when you're looking at the moment and what you want to see. What I did was, I took a look at the work that the school board did this year in setting goals. And they did that in December. And one extremely important goal that they put in front of us was technology. Because we have not, we have had a lot of work done on technology in the past, but we still have not reached the 21st century and what needs to happen there. So I was very pleased to see the board truly focus on technology and the needs of technology in our school system. With that, it also opens the door for using data in order to understand what we're doing, what successes we have. It also opens the door of our curriculum instruction and assessment. So what I saw immediately was, we now have several connections together that are very important connections. We're developing curriculum, we are looking at instruction and how that works to ensure that students are getting the best education they can. We look at assessing their learning, we look at gathering data to understand what we know about what they're learning. And we use technology along with other resources, including textbooks, which I've heard a lot about in the last three years, in order to ensure that we have all the pieces to the puzzle. And we do this on a limited budget, a budget that gets smaller every year. This year, we have certainly been attacked in '09 with the curtailment, which was just recently set aside because of the supplemental budget. We've also had that, we thought it was going to be in 10 and 11, is our understanding now, that the governor will not be doing that. So we are, we look at a budget that is based on what are the actual spending needs of the system. I can't lay aside the fact that we do start out a budget year every year when we look at salaries and fringe benefits, and we start out with a 1.1 million dollar need for the system. There's no question about that. We chose a few years, two years ago, not to go into a consolidated program. So we are a school system that stands on its own, that continues to spend less than most systems our size across the state, and we continue to do the best job we can with what we have. So in looking at that, what I did for this time is that, number one, I looked at technology as having a greater importance because of the goals of the board, but also my belief that technology plays an important part with curriculum, instruction, assessment, and data. So in doing that, what we did is we relooked at the budget one more time. We also knew there's some different monies here. We knew that we were getting, we had originally put in the budget twenty percent for insurance, health insurance, because that is a contracted agreement. Most systems in the state, when you are looking at a health insurance, you do not know what it's going to be yet, you normally build it to eighty to twenty percent to be sure that you are well-prepared. Two weeks ago, I heard from many people in the state that it looked like it was going to be less than ten percent. As of Thursday, we'll know exactly what it's going to be. But at that point in time, we dropped the insurance from ten, twenty percent to ten percent, which then allowed me to take a look at the changing picture. So I have here, which Trish will pass out, kind of the overview of where we are right now with staffing and what it looks like. Now, I would love to do all things for all people at all times, but unfortunately, I can't manage that with the money we have unless I begin to look at what we're doing and not feel that we can move ahead. So what you'll find here is, we do have some staffing cuts. Some of the staffing cuts will be based on population. For instance, we have a second-grade teacher who is cut at Poncove. That teacher would have been cut if we had a ten percent budget, or a five percent budget, or a zero percent budget, because numbers are dropping, there's no question about that. We were able to cut some stipend positions. We were able to look at some other programs. We began at the same time to build in what we felt were the needs for technology and how we would manage that. We looked at the money that's available through the stimulus package from the president. We still do not have the exact formula, it has not been, we've heard, I heard today, again, in legislature, they're still working out that bottom line. But we're hoping we can use some of that stimulus money, not for long-term savings, a long-term change, this is only fifteen-month money, but looking for that to lead some of the work we want to do in technology, some of the work we want to do around executive skills. We looked at some positions we had cut, and we decided when we look at the full picture K through twelve, we needed to bring some of those back. And so we have shown some of those on this, in this package. What has really happened is, we have, in total, have a cut of 194,597. Now, when you stop and think that we started out with a 1.1 million dollar shortfall, and you look at how we have arranged, rearranged money, 194,597 is not good, but it's better than 1.1 million. And so that's where we have ended up. Now, we can debate for days on end, or weeks on end, or months on end, what is right and what is wrong. I've heard people tonight, and I've heard people before, say, "Well, I could tell you better ways to do this." Everyone has a better way to do this, as long as it's not in their backyard. So we have worked as hard as we possibly can, hours after hours, trying to resolve this budget process for this year, to make it look like, and make it be, a process that will work. I want to thank my administrators, who have spent many, many, many grueling hours with me as we've gone through this, discussed it, argued it, and come back around and around and around again to see where we are. I want to thank the board for their patience. You get from me a superintendent's budget that is based on what information we have, and what information we have to work with. And it is frustrating, I know for you, also. But hopefully, we are coming up with a new plan so that in fiscal year 11, we'll have a very different way of looking at this. But basically, what I would say to you is, with the savings that we were able to get, first from fuel oil, secondly from diesel fuel, thirdly from health insurance, hopefully, by not getting the curtailment, enough money of unexpendited funds to make sure we have the revenue that we need to have, we have been able to come to a point where we are showing an increase of .77%, which had previously been a 4.03% increase. As of Monday, Monday, yes, Monday, we heard from the town manager that, based on the statistics we have right now, we have a zero percent tax increase for the town. Now, we have increased spending, but because of all of the different ways we have been able to realign money as we learn it's there. This is not a trick, it's not something I've been hiding, but as we learn what we have, we have learned that we are able to make that money work for us, which I'm very pleased to see. So what you have, and I think some of you picked it up down back, you have a two-page letter from me, which briefly summarizes this new alignment of the budget. You also have the budget realignment sheet, which talks about some of the things that we have done. And then you, then we have a newer sheet, which kind of looks at the whole package. And so that's what I had And so that's what I had, that I talked with the board about on Friday in their finance committee meeting. And that is the piece that we would discuss tonight, as far as where we are going to go from there. Hopefully, to come to a point where we can make a decision on a fiscal year 10 budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Ellen. Do I have a motion at all?
I'll make the motion based on the finance committee's recommendation to the school board of last Friday. I move that we accept the superintendent's proposed budget for 2009, 2010 of 1.93% above the 2008, 2009 budget. This includes a revenue increase of 3.41%. Local property tax of 1.61% increase. And mills raised for education of .77%. I'll also note that for a median home in Cape Elizabeth valued at $252,500, this would represent a $24.14 tax increase on an annual basis.
Thank you, Kathy. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Rebecca. I'm sure there are comments, questions, anyone. Want to start?
Mary? I'll start. I will be supporting the superintendent's budget tonight. I'd like to thank the superintendent and the rest of the DLT for the many hours that they put into this. Those of you who have been following this process recognize that we've come a long way from where we feared we might be tonight in a matter of two months. It's true that we're very lean at this time, and every cut is to the bone. We heard tonight about how everyone gets hurt, every cut hurts someone somewhere. But I feel the foundation of a good learning experience starts with quality teachers and dynamic programs. And thanks to the monies from the stimulus package and the adjustments made in benefits for fuel costs, then we were able to save many teaching positions and programs. In addition, support for the district goals around technology will be advanced in each school, and I'm pleased to see at least partial funding for textbooks, which are a critical investment for our students and our schools. Of course, there were losses in this budget cycle, most of which were taken from the smallest piece of the budgetary pie, that which is dedicated to basic education. As I've said before, it's untenable to assume that we can continue to slice away at this piece of the pie without consequence for our system and our community. Though this is my first budget cycle from the inside, I've been watching from the outside pretty closely for about five years. And it occurs to me that without exception, the board has been forewarned that a struggling economy required them to sharpen their pencils and make cuts, even when the market was at 13,000. Regardless, pencils were sharpened and programs were cut, and parents were required to shoulder more and more of the economic burden for a public education for their children. It's just an unsustainable path. Fortunately, today, I don't know how many of you saw this, but the president unveiled his new plan for education. And I think we're probably on the brink of some reform. Locally, what we've seen is the emails have been pouring in, and they show a spirit of support for our schools and even some creative ideas for saving tax dollars to rescue teaching positions and educational programming. It's my hope that the tide for education may be turning. However, these are truly extraordinary times. And as much as I'd like to have a budget that may be higher, we need a budget with a minimal tax impact. It's not only sensible, it's required, and it's the right thing to do. So thanks to the work of the DLT, that's the budget that will be delivered to our town council next week, I assume, or I hope. And as a citizen, I have to say it's my hope that the council will approve this budget as it stands and send it to the voters without alteration. This year especially, we need an uncomplicated budget validation vote so our community can refocus its attention on what's best for, I think, the nation's economic recovery, which is offering a high-quality education to its future leaders. It is my opinion that our potential rests in educational achievement and continued investment, which is why I support the budget as it's presented. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Anyone else? Dr. Megan Hellet? Kathy?
Are you calling on me?
I was going to say, it's just easier to call it down the line.
Thank you. I didn't prepare a speech for tonight. I didn't last year either, because I wanted to sort of see how things came out. I consider this budget a compromised budget because I supported a lower budget, and I think I've said that a couple of times. My concerns continue to be the economy and what's happening out there. And recognizing that the finance committee supported the recommendation to the board of this budget, I validate that. I would like to see us look at budgeting process a little differently next year. In fact, I think maybe it should be an ongoing process, because I think we end up being, getting to a point where we are sort of scrambling. I think some of us want to hear more about the programs. I think some of us want to hear more about the numbers. I'm one of the people that wants to hear more about the numbers. And so I don't think we necessarily spend enough time doing that. And I'm saying to myself, I don't know that that's something that we should save for just the budgeting time, but should do it on an ongoing basis. So I also would like to thank the superintendent and the district leadership folks, and actually, all the staff, because I know we've heard from staff members, but I recognize that we have a hard-working staff, and they keep the interest of the students first and foremost, which is what I try to remind myself always as we get into some of the political discussions and we hear from some folks, and we get some good ideas from some of the public folks. But I try to remember that it's, at the risk of sounding like a former school board member, it's about the kids. So for those of us who've been on there for a while, we know who I'm talking about. So I think that's probably all I need to say.
Thank you, Kathy. Anyone else? Karen?
I apologize, I'm a little more long-winded, but I think some of you have grown accustomed to it because it takes me time, so I don't panic when I speak. I have to prepare what I'm going to say. So I'm going to share with you, and I think I might be able to skip over some of it, so that's the goodness. Okay, pulling together-
Karen, do we need to put a lemon on you?
Yes, you might have to put a lemon on me, exactly. Well, pulling together my thoughts on this year's school budget has been challenging. On a daily basis, we read about or experience the ramifications of a serious economic recession. Everyone has been impacted in some way, the loss of a job, a foreclosure, a loss of savings and investments, the loss of health insurance, a move back home, and the list goes on. Each of us has been forced to rethink our current economic realities and to make prudent, often difficult, and sometimes extremely, extremely painful decisions. With this backdrop in mind, I have had to repeatedly ask myself, how can we best advocate for our schools? How can we make sure we remain focused on improving student learning and student performance? How can we provide stewardship and positive direction for public education in our community that will adequately prepare our students for the 21st century? I am grateful to be working with the other school board members here tonight who were elected by this community. I believe we all care deeply about our schools and about the people who live in this community. I know I can pick up the phone or have a conversation with any one of them to get a broader perspective or better understand an opinion different from my own. I have learned a great deal from them, from the district leadership team, from the faculty and staff, the superintendent, and all the citizens who have cared enough to voice their opinions. Thank you. It is very tempting to get stuck in the box of fighting for what we already have, or fighting to do what we have always done, but to do it a little better, or fighting to hold on to our current notion of excellence, but for less money. But none of these propositions is particularly innovative. None of these truly moves us forward in a significant way educationally, and none of these takes us out of the 20th century way of doing things, placing us squarely into a dynamic global 21st century paradigm that demands a more radical shift in the way we do school. In today's Portland Press Herald, there was an editorial written by Ron Bancroft entitled "Educational Decline Is Really Our Biggest Problem." He cited an editorial written several months earlier by David Brooks in The New York Times called "The Biggest Issue." Both aptly describe the correlation between being a leading economic power and Americans' unparalleled commitment to education, hard work, and economic freedom, or at least what used to be, our unparalleled commitment to education in the first half of the 20th century. Our growth and educational progress the second half of the 20th century and leading into the 21st century has been modest at best and at times has stagnated. Our enormous lead over other developed countries has all but disappeared, and many would argue that poor education is threatening our country's long-term prospects. One of the key areas mentioned that we are failing to address in our educational system is knowledge-based skills that are relevant to the 21st century and the global and technological world in which we now live. Cape is no exception to being stuck in the 20th century way of educating our students. Fortunately, education appears to be making its way once again to the top of the list of national priorities. Our state revenue curtailment has been lifted for this year and next. Additional stimulus funds are in the pipelines to be used towards such things as implementing RTI, training teachers, and supporting technology. The stimulus money, which literally was not part of our budgetary landscape several months ago, has also helped us open the door for more meaningful discussions around where we should be heading as a school district. For those of you who sat through our long and at times frustrating school board workshop two Thursdays ago, I will say to you that that was perhaps one of the most difficult but productive workshops we have had with the district leadership team because of what ultimately resulted and is now reflected in the budget we have before us. Here are some of the items, and I'm not going to go into these in detail because you all know them. And they're available on the website, for those of you who don't want to hear them again. Here are some of the items included in this year's budget that I strongly believe are going to move us in the right direction. And I will just do the highlights without the detail. The reallocation of resources to give greater support toward technology goals in our district. The reallocation of resources toward targeted or directed staff development that are clearly tied to our district goals and improvement of student learning, specifically movement toward achieving our curriculum, instruction, and assessment goals and technology goals. And an acknowledgement that teacher leaders are important in achieving curriculum development goals, ultimately enhancing student learning by reinstating part-time teacher leader roles in the middle school. A glimmer of hope that Mandarin might make its way into our curriculum as an introductory course in high school. Money that has finally been set aside to begin a regular systematic approach to managing and purchasing the selections, textbook or technology, to support strong curriculum components. And also a clearly delineated stimulus spending priority list for our district. There are signs that our federal government understands that the cost of progress cannot all be placed solely on the local taxpayers and an opportunity for our DLT to jumpstart important and innovative work that will lead us where we need to go. I want to thank and commend each person on the district leadership team and our superintendent for listening, for being open-minded and flexible, and for striving to move us forward with student learning and adequate support of the faculty always at the forefront of their thinking. There are two other budget-related items that I would like to address briefly, and I think one of them relates to several of the comments made tonight. First of all, several positions have been cut, and several school employees will need to be laid off. In the current economic climate, I would have liked to have seen the faculty and staff step up to the plate with a willingness to be open to some sacrifice in order to protect their colleagues' jobs. I do not feel good about our sending anyone out in this economy to look for a job. Second, while I am pleased with some of the progress I believe we can make with this current budget, I am going forward, I hope going forward, that we will begin to look at the possibilities and opportunities that we are foregoing by self-imposed tax caps, fears of different versions of labor, inflexible and shortsighted frugality measures that don't even attempt to grasp at the complexities of educational innovation. These, what I refer to as inflexible and rigid tax-driven measures, are not wise when we can't see the forest for the trees, when we no longer seek a vision of innovation and excellence that is supported by the community, and when cost efficiency becomes more important than recognizing when and where we need to spend to make the necessary investments for long-term viability and true educational excellence. The budget before us tonight calls for a 1.93% increase in school expenditures. And Kathy has already mentioned a 1.61% increase in local property tax and a 0.77% increase in mills raised for education. I believe this is a reasonable and responsible increase and request to ask of our community members. It is important to keep our schools, one of our community's greatest assets and sources of pride, headed in the right direction to begin the work of more strategically positioning ourselves to address the challenges and educational demands of the 21st century, to more effectively develop our teachers and prepare our students to compete in a global economy, and to more seriously and meaningfully strive for excellence in education. I support the 1.93% budget and hope you will as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Anyone else? Do you have any comments?
Linda and I are both shaking our heads. Nobody wants to go after that.
That's right.
I didn't read all.
I'll do it. I couldn't put two sentences together for the past five days, so I'm just going to have to wing it. I will be supporting this budget as presented. When we started this process, I felt nothing but despair with the knowledge that we were going to have at the very start, a $1.1 million increase as based the negotiated contracted salaries and benefits and what that would mean to the budget as a whole in this economic environment. And to say that, to be looking at a budget at a 1.9% increase with a 0.77% impact on mills raised without having completely devastated our schools, I think is rather remarkable. And I think we have to give credit to pretty much everybody who has spoken in the past couple of months, and that would be the DLT, citizens, staff, and board members. It's quite remarkable. I also think, Mary, you are correct, that a lot of this, we owe also to the stimulus money and how it has rescued us because originally, a 2% increase in our budget would have resulted in a 4% increase in taxes. And I'm not sure we could have gotten that through with citizens. So I'm very grateful that we have this financial support from our federal government and that we will have it going forward, at least for another one to two years. I don't think we please anybody on this budget. I think parents are disappointed that we have cut into the freshman sports. Teachers are obviously going to be very much missing the Ed Tech 1 support. And I personally will be very much missing the executive skills teacher who I was going to personally rely on for my children. But I'm hopeful that we could perhaps find ways to work that into our regular curriculum. Because I can tell you, even at the age of nine, executive skills still come into play. So perhaps we could start it at Poncove. So anyways, I thank everybody for all of their hard work. I'm hopeful with this budget that we can make some forward movement. And I'm hopeful that all of our citizens could perhaps offer their services to our teachers should the Ed Tech 1 positions have that much of an impact on the support for our teachers that they say. So I will be looking for the postings on Cable Television 3 for the various copying and filing work that needs to be done. Thank you.
Thank you, Rebecca. Anyone else? Anyone else?
I'm still finding myself in a pretty difficult position. I walked in here tonight without any type of decision made. I wanted to come this evening to hear what had to be said by any of the members of the public, as well as my fellow board members, and I'm still sitting here finding it to be quite a struggle. I was one of the board members when the initial budget discussion started, living through the economic times, just like everyone else in this room, seeing it on a day-to-day basis, the effects that it's having not only in our community, in our state, but literally nationwide. It's been a tremendous struggle for me to look at this, and unfortunately, I'm another person looking at the bottom line. I know that when we talk about education, we're talking that it's a people business. It affects not only the staff members, it affects the students, it affects everybody in this community. And every, every part of that does have a person attached to it. So it is very difficult for me as well to make that separation between the people business that we're in and the bottom-line dollar that we must eventually reach. As I said, I came in here tonight without my decision made. I do believe that the efforts that have been put forth by the superintendent, the DLT, all of the, all of the staff members in the schools, because I know that our DLT has sought for their input, I do applaud all of these members for their innovative and collaborative thinking, or obviously, we wouldn't have been able to reach the point that we're at. I do truly believe that this is a compromise budget that's being offered here tonight. At this point in time, I am leaning towards approving the recommendation by the Finance Committee, but I must tell you, it has been a struggle throughout this whole budget season. I am going to say that with the caveat that I hope to see more innovative and collaborative thinking on the part of all of the staff members here within the school district, so that we can make sure that whatever the bottom line does come out to be after the vote is sent to the public, that we can continue to draw on the expertise of all of our staff members, especially our superintendent and DLT, to make sure that the monies that they do receive are spent to the best of their abilities and to make sure that we are maintaining, if not pushing forward, the educational programming and services that we're offering our students. And thank you again to all of you.
Thank you, Linda. Peter, do you?
I'm ready to vote.
Okay. Any other comments? No. Okay, I will go last. I want to echo the thanks to the administrative team and the staff, and I also want to respond to Kathy's comments about the budget process. I think there is some, I think there's some impetus and effort that will go into sort of revamping that. I will be supporting this budget, the superintendent's budget, as I think it represents a reasonable compromise between the level of resources I believe the schools truly need, which would exceed a 2% increase in expenditures, and the level of resources which seems to be available in the current economic climate. There are few investments today which are yielding positive returns. I think public education is the exception to that rule. The students we are educating now will be the ones who will be the decision-makers, the financiers, the investors, those funding our retirements 10 to 20 years hence. Investment in education positively correlates with a nation's economic growth, as Karen has mentioned. There is also ample evidence to tie strong public education systems with elevated residential properties, values, and safer communities. In our budget this year, as in the past several years, we have made trade-offs in order to maintain the integrity of our system. I think we are straddling a very fine line between cost savings and shortchanging our students and their families, who increasingly pick up the tab for items that the schools no longer pay for. In the combined budgets for this year and last, there will be a reduction of 3.8 teachers, seven EdTechs, one curriculum coordinator, several high school coaches. There has been a conversion to pay-to-play athletics at the middle school, elimination of all funding for the outdoor experiential learning programs at the middle school, closure of the high school MAC lab, and withdrawal from the Project Blueprint, a strategy and information sharing group of high-performing school districts. Some of these cuts have been made in response to declining enrollments, as has been so often pointed out to us, but that explanation simplifies the situation. The needs of the students that we do serve have changed, and we are operating in an environment of increasing demands. Our system has far more students today who require medical support and intervention at school. We have state and federal mandates for nutrition and wellness. We have additional requirements for crisis management and emergency planning. We have mandated testing and reporting, and perhaps new graduation requirements, as you can believe what was reported in the Portland Press Herald today. We are preparing students for a more competitive college application process, in fact, the most competitive since public higher education has sort of come into being, and a more complicated global workplace. We have attempted to keep up with changing technology and to minimize threats of litigation, particularly around special education. There have been some thought-provoking ideas which have arisen during the budget process this year, and for that, I would like to thank the public. Consideration should be given to these suggestions, not only with potential efficiencies and cost savings in mind, but also within the context of the school's mission, which is to ensure that all of our students develop the knowledge, skills, behaviors, and attitudes to become successful individuals and citizens. I ran across a quote the other day from Jack Welch, the former General Electric CEO and now current MIT Sloan professor, that I thought was kind of interesting. He said, "This is a time for us to stand up and get out and do something about the country. We have to think about tomorrow, the good tomorrow, the great tomorrow, and not be hunkered down under a rock sucking our thumbs." I think this budget prevents us from sucking our thumbs and maybe pushes our toe out from underneath the rock. Investing in our schools is one way to start to move forward." Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, we have a motion and a second on the table. All those in favor of the motion as presented? All those opposed? Okay, six one. Thank you. Okay, moving on. Consideration and action to approve middle school athletic fee positions.
Yes, I have only one this evening. It is for Jeremy LaRose, who would be indoor track assistant, and he is with funds from the school system. It is not a new position, however, he's a new person in that position, and if you read the note at the bottom, it says that Jeremy is a former Cape Elizabeth middle school coach. He has an extensive track background as a player and a coach.
Okay, is there a motion?
I move that we approve the middle school athletic position, fee position as nominated by the superintendent.
Thank you, Rebecca. A second?
Second.
Thank you, Linda. Linda, all those in favor? Seven zero. Thank you. Consideration to approve high school athletic fee positions.
Okay, a fairly long list. Jeff?
Is that okay?
Sure. Come on up, Jeff.
It's been this, a couple of weeks ago and since then, have been a couple of adjustments because of people changing some jobs and just learning of a fingerprint thing that need to be renewed this afternoon. So Mike Coller, who is on Page One, JV baseball, just needs a renewal of fingerprint. It expired on January 2009, we just found that out, and so he has a form that he's filling out, and that should be taken care of soon, but I guess we should strike that name until that takes place. Also, let's see, on the back page, Bruce Widdon will no longer be coaching, so we can strike him. Or, yep. And then finally, if we could strike Billy Brown until he is waiting on a new position. He's, I guess there are two other applicants for this one position he's applying for, for a full-time job, and his time commitment will, if he does get this new position, will be impacted. So if I could just hold off until the next, we have spring sports start March 30th, so if, I think we meet the next date.
April 14th.
April 14th.
Can do a workshop?
We may not have that, a position filled there until that time, but, so he can't give a definite answer on, on that commitment, so it might be better if we just strike that for now and then make a decision later.
Okay.
And those were the two, or I'm sorry, the three adjustments.
Thank you, Jeff.
Apologize, that was just, because when we have to submit this, it, things change, and one of them happened literally three hours ago, so, thanks.
Thank you, Jeff, because those were some of the pieces that I also had. So if I go down through this list, and I would like to comment on each one that Jeff also commented on, first one is Chris Haywood for Varsity Baseball. The second one is Mike Coller, who is applying for his renewal. Now, I'm just going to say this, you do have, you could vote for him with the understanding that he cannot coach until I get proof that he has applied for his renewal. If he gets that in today or tomorrow, he will get justification that's been sent in, and at that time, because he has been approved, I can't approve him. So that is one which you, which you can do. I have Eric Higgins, Assistant Varsity Baseball. I'm, I'm looking at all of these, are all not new positions, these are all positions already there. Doug Donovan, freshman baseball. Joe Henrickson, varsity softball. Kyle Henrickson, JV softball. Ben Raymond, varsity boys lacrosse. David Croft, JV boys lacrosse. Kurt Chapin, varsity girls lacrosse. On the next page is Sally Newhall, who is JV girls lacrosse. Jeff Perkins, who is assistant varsity girls lacrosse. Charlie Carroll, who is assistant varsity boys lacrosse. And let me go backwards for just a minute, both Jeff Perkins and Charlie are paid for by the boosters as opposed to his school funds. Doug Worthley, who is head track coach. David Weatherby, who's the assistant track coach. We have taken Bruce Widdon off at this point. Andy Stroud, who is varsity tennis, girls and boys. We've also taken William or Billy Brown off because he does not have his, has not had his fingerprints done, and I'm also understanding we may have a replacement there. Sari Bokal, did I say that right? Assistant girls tennis. And finally, Nick Garet, who is a volunteer track assistant. So what you would be voting on is all of these candidates, with the exception of Bruce Widdon, who we've taken off the list, and Billy Brown, who we've taken off the list. And you can send Mike Coller separately if you would like, and either take a vote to accept him once I have the proof that he's had the test done, or you can set him aside, either way.
Okay.
I move that we approve the, what am I doing? High school athletic fee positions as presented by the superintendent with the inclusion of Mike Coller, with the understanding that if the fingerprinting does not go through, that he will not have a position.
Thank you, Rebecca. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Karen. Any questions or comments? I just have one quick question. I thought we've done this before, so forgive me. I thought that we couldn't have relatives in this, in a supervisory position according to our policy, and I know we went through this a couple of years ago, and I thought that one was at the middle school and one was at the high school, but these are in fact, both at the high school, one's varsity and one's JV.
And that's Carl and Joe Henrickson?
Right.
Yes. I remember that was discussed last year, as a matter of fact, and the question was, I think it was brought to the then-director, is that somebody would have to evaluate Kyle Henrickson other than Joe Henrickson. So it would be somebody, either the director or someone else. Is that, is that an understanding you have, or has anyone mentioned that to you at this point?
That has not been mentioned.
Okay. That was, I, that is my recollection, because I think it was, I think that's, you brought it up before.
Yeah, we took it in pause.
And we put somebody in to take care of them at that piece. You can make a decision because of policy that you don't want to have them, both at the high school level, particularly at the same level, or Jeff will have to find someone to evaluate Kyle Henrickson above and beyond Joe Henrickson. Did I say that right?
Anybody else have any thoughts on that?
I agree that that should, because that's what we did before, when there was a familiar relationship. I think it was the, sorry, Jeff, I think it was the athletic director that
I think it was, too.
stepped in and did that evaluation piece. Whether it's, you know, whether it wouldn't be done properly or not, I don't think is the question.
Right, just that's the policy.
The implication.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Just quickly, I'm guessing the new hire column wasn't filled out. Are all of these returning hires?
I think. They are all current and coaching in the past.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, all those in favor? Seven zero. Thank you. Consideration to approve district co-curricular fee position or mentor teacher for the remainder of 2008, 2009. Alan?
And on this again, I have a recommendation for a mentor for new teacher. I think I had mentioned it to you before. David Croft has gone into a position at the middle school, I think. Am I right about that? Is David?
Poncove.
Poncove, excuse me. Because he is a new person, he must have a mentor, and so Carly Bean, who has been trained as a mentor, will serve as his mentor for one-third of the time, in other words, the one-third, the rest of the year. And so this is asking for approval for her to do this.
I move that we approve the district co-curricular fee position for the remainder of '08, '09, as presented by the superintendent.
Second. Thank you, Rebecca and Linda. Questions, comments? All those in favor? Seven zero. Rebecca, consideration of policies for second reading.
Oh, great. Okay, so you have before you Policies EF, EFE, KFA. There were no comments made for their first reading. No comments were received by the policy committee, and so they forwarded them to the school board for a second reading in its current form. So I would make a motion that the board approve Policies EF, Food Services Management; Policy EFE, Competitive Food Sales; Policies KFA, Smoking on School, oh, sorry. KFA, Smoking on School Property is being recommended for deletion as this is, this policy is handled now under a separate policy.
Second?
Second.
Thank you, Kathy. Questions or comments for Rebecca? All those in favor? Thank you. Rebecca, consideration of following policies for first reading.
Right, so you have before you Policy KI, Visitors to the Schools, and Policy KLD, Public Complaints About School Personnel. Policy KI, we are utilizing the recommended MSMA format with the deletion of their comment line on paragraph C. And then Policy KLD, we are using the Drummond-Woodsen recommended format with the adjustment of replacing the second sentence in the third paragraph with the underlined. And if anybody has any comments that they'd like to make, please feel free to forward them to me, and we'll discuss them in our policy committee meeting.
Does anyone have any questions or comments right now? Can I just make one question? On Visitors to the School in Part B, all visitors shall report to the main office upon arrival. This section shall not apply to parents or citizens who have been invited to the school for an open house performance, I understand that, or other pre-planned school program. Just curious to know, like, I'm thinking a particular classroom is having the parents come in, and I think, having done that in the past, I've always signed in at the office. I'm just wondering if you want to differentiate, and I just toss it out, to differentiate, a pre-planned school program might be 10 parents, and I think you might want some control over that versus, I can certainly understand, you don't want every parent who's coming to a concert to sign in.
Okay, we'll discuss that in our next meeting.
Thank you. Okay, committee reports. Just a reminder, oh, I'm, oh, I'm sorry, Alan.
Don't forget these two people.
I know, we made an adjustment.
Yes.
Rushing through this. Gee, which was maternity leave.
It's two maternity, two leaves, yes.
Okay.
Alan, apologize. One, I just changed, it was in your packet in another place, and the other one was the new one I left for you. So the first one I'll take a look at is Nicole Ball. Nicole wrote this letter on March 30th. Nicole wrote this letter on March 3, 2009, to say that she is expecting, her maternity leave is from July 17 to September 11, according to what a doctor tells her at this point. She would request an extension of her leave and hope to return to Poncove on October 5, 2009. I will need a substitute for the beginning of the school year through October 2. I have spoken with Mr. Ice Meyer, and he is aware of the situation. So this is one where I would need a vote from you in order to extend her unpaid leave to October 5.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Mary. Second? Any second?
Second.
Thank you, Rebecca. Any questions or comments for Alan?
Same question. Do we have a good, long-term substitute?
And I look to Mr. Ice Meyer.
That absence is going to occur in the beginning of the year, so we'll have somebody that is a very successful.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? All those in favor? Seven zero. Thank you.
The second one is from Karen Lamb, who is a teacher at the high school. She knows that on August 7, 2009, she will begin her maternity leave. She is requesting an extended leave of absence for the 2009-10 academic year, returning to teach at Cape Elizabeth in August of 2010. And so what she is requesting is a full year's leave of absence without pay.
Is there a motion?
Come on, somebody else. I'm so moved.
Thank you, Mary. Second? Was that second? Thank you, Karen. Any questions or comments for Alan?
I always ask, because I get confused. If we grant a leave of absence, that means we hold the position for the person.
For that year, yeah.
For that year. Although they're not being paid beyond our requirement of paying them.
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
Anybody else? All those in favor? Seven zero. Okay. Am I missing anything else? I've made two mistakes tonight.
It's all yours now.
Committee reports. I just want to quickly remind people that, or the public, that notes and agendas for meetings are posted on the website, so they are accessible. But having said that, I will ask if there's any committee chairs who have reports that they would like to make. Rebecca?
I just have one thing, and Jeff, I'm going to have to ask you to confirm on the spot, if you may. The policy committee will be organizing a substance abuse public forum. And Jeff, are we confirmed for April 7 at 7:00? Or is it April 9?
I was going to say the ninth and the minutes, which...
I'm sorry, it's April 9. Yeah, April, so I just wanted to make that announcement, it's April 9 at 7:00, and more information will be forthcoming.
Thank you, Rebecca. Also, just as a comment, I had said it earlier, you've done a great job of, as legislative liaison, of providing us with information, so if you have anything you would like to share. I don't mean to put you on the spot, I want to thank you for all the work that you've done, and if...
Okay, well, I think the evidence of the research that we've done into the stimulus funding is reflected in our budget. But, yeah, through extensive internet searches and phone calls to Washington DC, we were able, and some timely, finally, emails from Augusta, we were able to determine that there will be, that there is something called a stabilization fund, that the federal government is requiring the states to use to stabilize its funding to local districts. And that is indeed what happened this year, and we are hopeful that will continue next year and the following year, although I'm not sure what those amounts are going to be and how much of it will cover. But all indications are that that money will be there to help us up. In addition to that, there is some Title I and IDEA monies available to local districts. However, I believe that we were informed that we're not qualified for, we will not qualify for the Title I funds, because it requires a certain type of student population that we do not have here in Cape Elizabeth. But we will be receiving IDA money, and we have some excellent district leadership work that's occurring around this, and I'm sure we'll be pleased by some of the areas that we'll use that funding for. And finally, there is some mysterious grant money that's out there around technology and construction, although I have yet to see the actual names of these grants, or the amounts of money that's available, and whether schools would be allowed to apply directly for it, or whether it's actually going to be state-controlled. So that's the missing piece to the stimulus funding program, and hopefully, we'll get some more information in the next couple of weeks or so.
I probably should just add to that quickly. I know that there is a meeting on Monday, is Monday the 16th?
Yes.
There is a meeting in Augusta that I've just been invited to today, which will be the commissioner and her assistant will be presenting the newest information on how that money is available, et cetera. So I'll be up there on the 16th to gather that information to see where we are also.
And I would just like to follow up on one of the board member's comments about the ever-present possibility that the state is going to get approval for requiring graduation requirements for all school districts. And that comes with a whole host of new mandates and new funding requirements. And so we will be watching that very closely and keeping in touch with our state legislatures very closely as that moves forward. Because as Mary and I have made, and the board as a whole has made clear to our legislators that we would, it's imperative that we avoid any more unfunded mandates.
Thank you, Rebecca. Any other committee chairs?
Can I just add one piece while I'm thinking of it? If you haven't noted, we do now have a superintendent's blog that is on our website. It is, it is there, it says superintendent's blog, you hit it and you go into it. We have the three films from your workshops. We also have two blog pieces of information, the newest one went in today, and I just made notes to myself for another one that I'm going to write tomorrow. So we are going to continue that. So far, I've had zero comments, but I'm sure that won't last forever. We'll see how that goes. But I did want everyone to know that that is available, and it is up, and is moving ahead.
Thank you, Alan. Anybody else? Public comment, we move school board agenda requests. Are there any? Okay, announcement of upcoming meetings. All the dates to remember are on the website. And can I?
There will eventually be a teaching and learning committee meeting.
Oh, yes.
And that is in the works. We, I think we're very close to having it, and I will be in touch with the other, at least, school board members to come up with the time. So it will happen before our next board meeting.
Thank you. Can I entertain a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All those in favor? Thank you. Too moved over there. Thank you, everyone.
I seconded it.